Good morning, everyone. How are you today?
We don't know.
You don't know? I would suggest that everybody unmute yourselves on the computer. Nick is unmuted, everybody, so you have the ability. If you are commissioners, you're gonna wanna speak and join in. We do have Ann McGee with us from A&amp;I. We have Teagan Carter with us from A&amp;I. And Allison Moore with the Attorney General's Office from Human Resources. We've got Commissioner or President Davis. We have Commissioner Dagel, Commissioner Pacheco. We have Commissioner Linen. And we have someone here with their iPad up. I'm not sure who that is. It just says, "Owners." Who is that?
Commissioner Curra.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Senator. We also have Senator Driscoll on the call. We have Jenny just joined us. So I think we're... I know that Commissioner Glick was unable to attend today. Commissioner Barry was unable to attend. And Broussard was not sure whether he was gonna be able to make it. So President Davis, I'm gonna go ahead and just do a little housekeeping. And then I'll do just a quick roll call, whoever who's on here. Just to remind everybody today that this is being viewed by the public on YouTube. We also need to keep our discussions to the facilitators are working on. And keep it that direction. And then I'm gonna jump in and just do a roll call, so we know who's on board here. Senator Davis.
Here.
Thank you. Vice President Broussard. Vice President Broussard may join us later on this morning. Commissioner Glick, we know is absent. Commissioner Dagel.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Barry, we know is absent. Commissioner Linen.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Curra.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Pacheco.
I'm here.
Good morning. And Commissioner Wildcat.
Here.
Thank you. And we have joining the call with us this morning Senator Ogden Driscoll, Legislative Liaison from the Senate. Representative Walters did apologize. He was unable to attend. And I have not heard the Governor's liaison was going to join. Again, this is commissioners. This is exciting for us. And this is great. A great opportunity for all of us to work on our mission, vision, and value statements for the commission moving forward in the next several years. So I think, again, reminding you that this is being watched on YouTube. And I'm gonna turn it over to, I'm guessing, Ann. Turn it over to Ann to take over. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Moore. I appreciate it. We really appreciate your time today. We know everyone's time is very precious. But this is really important for you to review your current mission statement, vision, and your values. And today will just help you through the process. This is your mission, vision, and values. I do believe there will not be a vote on this today. Director Moore, if you... Is that correct?
Yes. And Ann, thank you for bringing that up, Ann. There will be no action taken. Once we come up with the direction that you all wanna go as far as mission value statements, then we will bring that to hopefully we can have this prepared and ready by the November 13th meeting. And then we can have it out there and discuss that at that meeting. And then have a formal motion to adopt.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I think right now, Teagan, if you would put up the current mission statement, and then we will go through everyone's statements that you provided to Teagan through the Google survey.
Absolutely. It looks like right now I don't have the ability to share my screen.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
The whiteboard?
Host-disabled participant screen sharing. Let's see.
Teagan, over in the very center of your screen on the lower end, it has the share screen button.
When I click on that, I get host-disabled participant screen sharing.
Well, I bet you Mr. Laramendi can maybe fix that, hopefully.
Uh-oh. Fingers crossed.
And he is listening, so I'm sure he's looking at that, trying to figure out how to do that.
All right.
There's always some sort of technical difficulties, especially on a Monday morning. Well, I will... I have on your mission in front of me. So while Teagan and the owner of the YouTube, Zoom, can figure this out. I'll just go ahead and... There it is. Wonderful. Thank you, Teagan. So your current mission is up here. And it says, "The primary goals of the Gaming Commission are the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare of the participants in the events, both human and equine. The commission strives to achieve this goal through an ongoing effort to improve the quality and integrity of Wyoming paramutual events. This includes investigation of applicants for permits to conduct paramutual events, as well as applicants for license to participate in these events." So what we wanted to do is give you some sample mission statements that Teagan pulled from other agencies. And so A&amp;I just updated their mission. "To the Department of Administration and Information, mission is to lead through exceptional service, collaboration, and creative solutions to help our partners succeed. YDOT is to provide a safe and effective transportation system." And I'm just gonna skip down to workforce services. "As public servants, we work hard every day to help ensure safe and fair workplaces with qualified workers." So I would like to just talk a little bit about mission statements. And then we're gonna go down the Myrow here to discuss what everyone had sent in on the survey. So a mission statement is a short summary of an organization's core purpose, their focus, and their aim. This usually includes a brief description of what the organization does and its key objectives. So Teagan, if you wanna go down a little bit. So here are the answers that we got, or the ideas from you. The first one is that more relevant to our new duties. So I'm wondering who, if someone would like to talk about that a little bit. What do you mean by more relevant to your new duty?
Okay. Yes. All good. That keeps you...
Ann, who are you speaking to there?
Anyone, the person that wrote this. I believe it might have been you, Director Moore.
Okay, thank you. And I do apologize for not jumping in quicker for you. I think that as much as anything, our tasks have changed dramatically with the new gaming commission. So our mission statement needs to be reflective of that. And to expand, basically, both sides of the house. Needs to include the gaming side and the nonprofit as well. The charitable side of the gaming. And then along with also with the horse racing side, we need to keep that. So being more relevant is what I mean for that. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. So the next one then is, "This includes investigations of applicants for permits to conduct paramutual events, skill-based amusement games, bingo games, and pull tabs wagering. These applicants include owners, operators, establishments, and OTB partners." So I understand that the Gaming Commission also does investigations on applicants?
Yes. And again, I'll jump in on that one. We do on the... On both sides, we're investigating the permittees. We're investigating the licensing as well, doing background checks on those.
Charlie, I'd like to go ahead and add. And I didn't write that one, but the thing about it is that our investigators are also law enforcement officers this time. So they have law enforcement duties.
And that is correct. Thank you.
Great. So the next one down is add gaming with paramutual. So definitely, paramutual and gaming is something that is important so far that we're finding things. And you'll see on the screen that Teagan's going to, you know, combine those thoughts, so that when we're done reading through everything, we can start to update your mission statement. So we have gaming is important, skill-based gaming, and paramutual events. The next one down is, I think we need to expand the statement to improve the games of skill. So that's definitely something that's important that we're seeing. And again, if anyone has any, anything that they would like to add or say, please jump in. This needs to be, you know, just a discussion, so feel free to jump in. All right. With the new games of skill bingo, pull tabs, added to the list of regulations that we are now to oversee, I think our mission statement should reflect the responsibility of the Gaming Commission to the people of the state of Wyoming. I like that, as well as the state. I think with some changes, this can be achieved. So there's definitely the responsibility that you have to ensure that the game, gaming community is being protected and investigated as well. So the primary mission of the Gaming Commission is twofold. The protection of the wagering public, the health, safety, and welfare of the participants, both human and equine. And the commission strives to achieve this mission through an ongoing effort to improve the quality and integrity of the Wyoming paramutual events. And the wagering public. I like that. If someone would be willing to share who wrote that and maybe talk a little bit more. And it's okay if you don't want to.
Teagan, who wrote that one, do you know?
Let me check.
I have the list here.
I think it was Danny Glick.
Okay. And Danny is not on the call.
That's right.
So he won't jump in on that. Again, I, you know, and I can jump in. And also, any of the commissioners, this is primarily for you all to jump in. But we have several things that we're covering. And I think that in my conversations with Commissioner Glick, you know, he was very focused when he asked me about these. You know, he does wanna make sure that we keep the protection of the wagering public. He's also very concerned about the health, safety, and welfare of the equine and human athletes that participate. So he hates to lose those in a mission statement. But also, he understands that the missions are to be very short. And then you can expand on the vision or on the value statements. So I can't...
This is Commissioner Linen.
I am at this point. And maybe one of the other commissioners would like to jump in and take a little stab at this, maybe too.
This is Commissioner Linen. And I think, you know, it's like the YDOT one. It's like seven or eight words. With our expansion into the all-encompassing with the gaming and the games of skill, and everything else like that, it's difficult to have a short mission statement. I agree with what Danny told you, Charlie. We don't wanna lose the focus of the paramutual and the, you know, the health, safety, and welfare of the participants in the horse racing end of it. But we also wanna be able to state the protection of the people of Wyoming and the wagering public through the Gaming Commission. So to us have, us to have a short mission statement is gonna be tough because they're not diametrically opposed, but they were... We've been expanded to a whole new realm that we hadn't really been involved in before. I think the idea of the twofold thing right there in the beginning that Danny wrote is a real good idea.
I really like this one because I think it covers what everyone else has said in a very concise way. Um, I think that we'll go through the rest, just to make sure we haven't missed something. And then, Teagan, let's go back to Danny's. And then maybe we can do a little wordsmith on that one. Would you agree with that, commissioners and Director Moore? Okay. All right. The next one down then is the primary goals of the Gaming Commission are the protection of the wagering public and health and safety and welfare, both human and animal. You strive to achieve through an ongoing effort to improve quality and integrity. And I like the quality and integrity. And I think we need to remember those two for your value statements, possibly. And this includes investigation of applicants to commit to conduct paramutual events and gaming events. So I think those are, everything is pretty much the same so far. Does anyone have any comments on this? It looks like someone might be talking, but they're on mute.
I'm sorry. Thank you. This is Commissioner Curra in Lander. I just read the newspaper article that the Lander Journal did with Charlie. And I think a lot of people have the same concern as the representative or senator from Rock Springs was the ties to Las Vegas, which I knew was going to come when all this began. So I think as much as we can tie down the integrity of the commission working with the gaming industry and the horse racing, particularly the gaming, is gonna hopefully put a lot of people at ease if we can hammer this through to the public when they see our mission statement.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We'll move forward. So the primary goals of the Gaming Commission are the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare.
Commissioner Linen, again.
I'm sorry?
This is Commissioner Linen again. Dick and Charlie, I'm on a... I don't get the Lander paper. So can you brief us on what that was? You know, I mean, I'm not exactly sure what the interview was that Charlie gave or anything else like that. And what was, what were the concerns or what were brought up in the article? You know, just a short synopsis.
Yeah, let me go get the papers till I can quote it verbatim. Hang on, Randy.
Commissioner Linen, what it was basically was recapping the TRW committee that was, what, two weeks ago? And some of the discussions that were there regarding integrity of gaming in the state. And then also, um... It was on the committee had asked, and had concerns about gaming in the state, the connection of outside influences to that, whether it's Las Vegas or whatever. But I think Commissioner Curra does have the article.
Yeah. And in no way, I don't think it's a negative article, Charlie. I think it was well-written, but they just brought up the issue from State Senator Anselm Dalton, Democrat in Rock Springs. Are all these Vegas entities, or are they owned by Wyoming people? So I think that's a perception that a lot of people have is that this is a Vegas run show and not a Wyoming run show.
Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but both Wyoming Horse Racing LLC and Wyoming Downs have investors from out of state that we have. Before the games of skill came, there were interests from out of state in the gaming industry from out of state that were already involved, so.
Yes, that is correct. Both of the operators, I mean, horse racing, about state influences and investors.
As well as participation.
Yes.
Do you think that with that being said, I'm going back to Danny Glick's information and saying something like the primary mission of the Wyoming Gaming Commission is twofold, and put in the word Wyoming?
I think we should stress that it's Wyoming, you know, the Wyoming Gaming Commission, you know, whether they're outside interests or whatever. This is the Wyoming Gaming Commission, and we are regulating gaming, games of skill, and paramutual events in the state of Wyoming. No matter where, no matter where the rules come from. But I think the fact that it should be, Wyoming should be stressed, or at least mentioned.
I agree, Randy. That sounds good.
All right. And then, on the second to last bullet point again, there is the value statement of being honest and fair. And so I think that's definitely for your value. And then, Teagan or Lander?
Sounds like somebody's got a construction project.
We'll get through it anyway. So this person is suggesting that we don't mention paramutual, and we reword the phrase of safety and welfare, both human and equine. And so I'm wondering if, let's see who, if someone would be willing to talk about that.
I don't think we should eliminate paramutual, to be honest. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I do. I agree with you, Dick. Paramutual is a form of gambling, so it should be spelled out in that.
Yep.
You know, I mean, we've got bingo and pull tabs and everything else mentioned in this. So I would think that we would wanna keep that consistent.
I agree.
And this is the way. And the only concern I would have with that is if you start putting specifically each gaming device, it'd become overwhelming. I kinda like the way Danny just wrote wagering public. And then it covers both human and equine. So you can have both, and it covers almost everything. Because it sounds to me like this could be expanding what the, from paramutual to historic horse racing, I mean, who knows what tomorrow's gonna bring?
Can you remind me which one I wrote? This is Jenny.
You wrote the second to bottom, where it says the "thank you," Teagan, right there.
I included lawful gaming, because that would encompass everything that would come down the pipe. And we didn't have to spell everything out, such as the skill base, historic horse racing, and that type of thing. So as long as it's allowed within the law, then it would cover it. I also included that the commission shall ensure all activities are conducted honestly and fairly through strong and effective regulation and enforcement, because I believe that's what all commissions should really focus on. And that covers everything about the licensing and just pretty much everything under one big umbrella. And I do agree that we should keep the paramutual in there because it still is, it still is a separate and distinct game. I don't think we should combine them because you're paramutual on this side with, and then you're gaming, they're two separate things. So I think we should keep paramutual in there.
Thank you.
I would agree. And horse racing, the horse racing industry as a whole, with the new, I don't know, whether it's HISA or HISAA or whatever, the new federal regulations that's coming down the pike, that is coming down, that is being proposed or whatever, and probably will become federal law. And that is because of things that have happened in the industry for the health, safety, and welfare of both riders and the horses. And there's a... The horse racing industry has gotten a black eye from what happened at Santa Anita last year to the injury to horses, et cetera, and everything else like that. That is being attacked. And to take the paramutual, the paramutual aspect and the health, safety, and welfare out of this is, I don't think that's a good idea. We need to keep that there, because I think that just strengthens our case that we're doing everything we can to do that. And that is incredibly important, as far as I'm concerned.
Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong. We haven't yet been able to really palmer gate rules for the games of skill and things like that. So basically, our only rulebook is the paramutual right now. Is that correct?
Um, I'm not... We are in the process of... At the last meeting, you had the rules for the skill-based amusement games. And so we've got those working. They are limited at this point because of the sunset and because of the authority we have at this point in time. But the legislature, I believe, is working on some of those technical corrections for the future.
But the OTBs and things like that are covered under our other rules and regulations. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
So I agree with Commissioner Wildcat that we need to keep that in place and separate and standalone while we develop the rest of it.
So how does everybody feel about Commissioner Wildcat's lawful gaming and paramutual activity included into the mission? Where we could say, "The primary mission of the Wyoming Gaming Commission", and I don't know if you wanna keep in, is twofold, that the protection of the wagering public and the health, safety, and welfare of the participants in lawful gaming and paramutual activity.
Okay. I don't think we can clarify it much more, can we, Ann?
I don't know. I just, I'm hearing what you guys are saying. And I think that would be pretty concise. I guess for me, my... Go ahead. Sorry.
I like the idea of the twofold in Danny's statement because there is a certain amount of comparison because of wagering. But the skill-based amusement games, as opposed to the OTB and the paramutual events, are two separate and distinct things. And I think we have to try to, in some way, clarify that in our mission statement.
Right. So, Teagan, do you wanna type that? So after that... is twofold, the protection of the wagering public and two, the health, safety and welfare of the participants in all lawful gaming and paramutual activity. Thank you, Teagan. So here, here's what you have so far. We want to continue on with the quality and integrity, or is that pretty concise? Any thoughts? Any questions?
I like that.
So we're agreeing that we can, the participants will include the, the horses, correct? You know, I'm, I'm not trying to pick this apart, but you know, for the for all of the people that hate the way the horses are treated in the racing industry, I don't know if that just leaves something out that can but I think participants would cover it all in regards to that. Am I thinking the wrong way, guys?
I agree, Dick. I think what you're trying to say is good.
Do you want to include the comma, both human and equine?
I don't know, do you, you guys think we need that, or do you think participants covers it adequately with the as a horse is a participant, I guess, if you really want to get technical? Do we need to clarify that more?
I, I think, I believe it's covered. My, my only question is, as primary mission, is it, would does twofold have to be taken out and, and just commas instead of one and two?
You know, that's a point we could, yeah, that might work.
It certainly makes it more concise.
I like that.
I'm good with that.
Excuse me, this is Nick. Teagan, can I steal control real quick?
Absolutely. Sorry about that, Nick, I was trying to get there. Hopefully you have it now.
Senator Driscoll, if, would you care to weigh in on this? I mean, you were part of the TRW committee that went ahead to, you know, the joint committee or whatever that, you know, that put the games of skill out there. Would you like to weigh on this? I really don't, I, I think we're trying to get it concise, I think we've done it. I, I'd like maybe your way in on this as to what we're trying to do here, and if you think that we're going in the right direction.
You are going in the right direction, thank you. I really think it's the, the commission's deal on, on this, I'm really truly pretty much monitoring. This is, this is your guys' deal, and I do think you're on the right path, and I fully support what you do. It, it really is your guys' duty to get it right, and I think you're going to, so that's kind of my two cents.
Wonderful. All right, Teagan, do you have phone control again? Can we move to the vision at this point? Does everyone feel comfortable moving forward?
Anne, excuse me one minute, I did, we do have Commissioner Broussard has just joined the conversation with us all, so I do not believe he, he may be joining us via phone. His camera's not on it. We also have Governor Zelayezon, Dan Schiffer, who's joining us as well, there's Troy's. He's live with us now.
Thank you.
Don't mind me, I'll catch up.
Thank you. Okay, well, great job on the mission, you guys, that's impressive. We're going to move on to the vision. And so I don't believe Director Moore, did you have a vision in the past?
No, we did not.
All right. So a vision is intended to, as a guide to help the organization make decisions that align with its and declared set of goals. It can be a thought, as thought of as a roadmap, where do you want to go, what do you want to, where do you want to be? Vision statements need to be concise, clear and future-oriented. My favorite example of a vision statement is from Microsoft, and this was at its founding. I'm sure it's changed since, but it's their vision set at computer on every desk and in every home. So it's just, it's something that you're striving for, something that you want to be in the future. And it's, you know, just hard and concise. And I, our vision statement is a trusted source for information, ideas and solutions. Workforce services leaders and workforce and safety solutions that contribute to a prosperous Wyoming economy. The Department of Corrections to be the benchmark correction agency in the United States. So I think those are some really good concise visions for some other state agents. On, or what, what we got in this survey. So, Director Moore, I believe this is yours, or you want something that brings us to a common goal, something that guides us? Do you want to comment any more on that?
Excuse me, could you, could you restate that?
Sure. This one is yours, and it said that something that brings us to a common goal, something to guide you. So what kind of guidance are you, are you wanting here?
You know, I, I think as much as anything, trying to keep things fairly concise. And I think that's what I had in mind when I wrote that. And I think the common goal is the protection of wagering kind of comes back to that.
Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't you, and we've had this conversation numerous times, and you probably have with other commissioners. We've got other state gaming commissions as well as the ACE, A R C I, coming to us at times and you know, commending us for what we're doing as a commission, so I would like to see where we not only do good for the state of Wyoming, but a vision where we are maybe the premier or the guiding force in both gaming and paramutual events. Correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, but don't you get those calls all the time?
Uh, yes, yes, we do.
I like that, thank you very much. Okay, we'll just go through and, and Teagan is typing down what people are saying as well. But the next one down, the Wyoming Gaming Commission, enhance the wagering experience, there is definitely wagering theme of the state's residents and to ensure that gaming operations continue to be fair, equitable and conform to the enrollments of the state. Okay, we'll move on. Does anyone have any comments?
I like that statement.
Okay, that's a good one then, so we'll move forward and then we'll work off of that one at this point. Providing a reliable, proactive and consistent value to the wagering public and all in horse racing. Something about the continuance of ensuring the integrity of paramutual events and games of skill through upholding legislative action. You know, the legislative actions involve laws of the state, so there's a theme right there. This growth of live horse racing and the continued expansion of the wagering public. So that might kind of be like the premier or driving force, expanding what you have now, you want it to, want something more in the future. And continued oversight of protections for human, equine and wager. There's definitely some themes there, protection laws of the state, expansion, a mirror driving force, wagering public. Let's see, the last one that we got, the Wyoming State Gaming Commission will maintain public confidence by operating with care and diligent manner and will be responsive, proactive and known for our expertise, which is the premier or driving force. Efficiency and professionalism while responding effectively to the evolving game and industry. So expansion, evolving. Right.
Anne, if I could maybe jump in here, my one question there on growth of live racing and then continued expansion for the wagering public. My concern would be, do we have, is this going beyond the regulatory authority? I, it's just a question. Expansion, you know, that would be up to obviously the operators and the permates. But again, we need to stay ahead of things where state government is not getting in the way of expansion. I don't know if that made sense to me, what I, what I said or not.
I think what you're saying, Charlie, is we don't need to be the salesman for the operators, we need to be.
And one word that I would like to see, and it is responsible. I think it's important for both the, you know, the horses as well as the, the public.
Charlie, this is Dick. Regarding the continued expansion, what control, if any, do we have over that? Isn't that a legislative issue?
Yes, that is, that is a legislative issue as far as any expansion goes.
Okay, that's what I thought. It wasn't our, it's not our duty to allow expansion, it has to be approved by the legislative people, our senators and representatives.
Yes. You know, also, Troy, for, for Commissioner Broussard, if you do want to speak, you've got your, you have the ability to unmute yourself back and forth, so don't be afraid to join in, everybody.
My only comment now is that this, this, we're shooting around to maintain public confidence by operating in a fair and diligent manner. To me, that sounds like we're missing the word integrity in there somewhere. To maintain public confidence in the integrity of the gambling environment or some, I, I, that's the only thing, aren't we trying to say that? Maybe I'm late to the party, but.
No, not at all. I, I think for all practical purposes, integrity covers it all.
Where would we stick that in there at, Troy? Just anywhere within the?
Well, we want to, sorry, let me get back. To me, it would be the Wyoming State Gaming Commission will maintain public's confidence in the integrity of the gaming environment by operating in a fair and diligent manner, that's.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's kind of where I see it, but I'm you know, I, that's what regulators do, I think, that's what we, everything we want to do is to maintain from the public's point of view that they can trust when they gamble in Wyoming. The highest integrity that we can, we can have injected into it some kind of way with, through our regulations and on and on and on.
And I apologize, Troy, could you just repeat that one more time?
Okay.
The Wyoming State Gaming Commission will maintain public confidence by.
Confidence in the integrity, right there. Maintain public confidence in the integrity of the gaming environment by operating in a fair and diligent, I think you can keep the rest.
Perfect, thank you.
I also like the evolving gaming industry because it doesn't lock us into anything, but it shows us there's growth.
I agree.
Yep. I agree.
Good job, Troy.
Where you want to be, future-oriented, is the Wyoming. So we take out state, the Wyoming Gaming Commission will maintain public confidence in the integrity of the evolving gaming environment by operating in a fair diligent manner and will be responsive, proactive and known for our expertise, efficiency and professionalism while responding effectively to the evolving gaming industry.
Looks good to me, in, in that statement, even though we don't have the words, it kind of highlights the fact that we're going to try to strive to be an industry leader.
Exactly.
Do we have evolve in there? We have it in there two spots. Is that a problem with sentences? Sentences?
Take that out there, I think. The integrity of the gaming environment, there we go. Does that look all right, guys? Good.
Yeah, I like it.
All right, any other concerns, questions? I think, Teagan, if you wouldn't mind, if you would copy paste this vision statement over to the value statement, because there's a lot of value, you know, professionalism, integrity. So I think we definitely want to make sure we've captured that as they're discussing the values of the Wyoming Gaming Commission. So, all right, should we move on, Director Moore?
Yes, that'd be great, thank you.
Great. All right, so the values, really, we want about three to seven. Any more than that, I think it gets a little convoluted and sometimes the values, depending on your definition, can kind of cross over, so I would recommend that you choose three to seven. This communicates what an organization expects of its employees. The values and beliefs that influence attitude and motivate actions. So these are the values that you, that you want to show not only to your employees, but also to the public as well. And, and so it's important that we have clear values on, so that we know everybody's working towards the same goal. So with that being said, we just gave some sample values. A and I leadership is, is a value, integrity, consistency, determination and accountability. Those are important values for the Department of A and I. Why that is respect, integrity, dedication, excellence and safety. And workforce services has a little bit more integrity, courage, discipline, loyalty, diligence, humility, optimism and conviction. So we'll go through what everyone sent in and then from there we'll have a good discussion of what, what values is important to the Wyoming Gaming Commission. All right. Let's see, where did we start? I'm sorry, I got kind of, all right there. Thank you, Teagan. All right, so. Um, I believe this was Director Moore. He wants values that are uplifting, that are relevant and applicable. He doesn't want to lose equine and safety. Commissioners and employees of the commission should possess the values of fairness, integrity, honesty and self motivation. So there's a one, two, three, four right there that we can discuss. The next one down is integrity, transparency and accountability. So there's integrity is definitely, uh, one that's been talked about quite a bit. Let's see, I'm going to the next one, extending cooperation would be one. So that would make sense, cooperation. Okay, I don't see any other really values statements in that where it says number one, Teagan. Um, and it's, it's under number three where it said cooperation, the importance of cooperation. I want to point to it so bad on my screen, but I know you can't.
Let's see, and then I zoom out and it goes out. I apologize. Right here, this one.
Got it.
All right, we'll get there.
I found myself doing that last week. I was pointing to my screen. I thought.
You're like, it's right there. I apologize. And it looks like it wants to zoom out as soon as I go into it. So we'll try this.
Thank you. Okay, and anyone please jump in at any time. I'm just kind of going through these and trying to find values, value, values. I think for a lot of these is like a personal value is, you know, we, it's been signed into law. You know, these are state statutes and so that's a value to you.
Something, I, I think something also that, you know, I'm not sure if it falls into the value side here, but the, you mentioned transparency. And also efficiencies. Um, I think with the landscape that we're dealing with currently in our state, we need to be very efficient in our processes and, and, uh, again, I think that all falls together with that transparency as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I would like to.
Go ahead, Sheri.
I was just going to say, I would like to make sure that we don't forget about the accountability and I'm the one that threw the fiduciary in there. Because we are responsible for a lot of cash flow and a lot of money, uh, transfers. So I, I would like to make sure that we keep that in mind as we're coming up with these too.
Thank you.
I think fairness is critical somewhat to be somewhere mentioned in here. And I say that mainly because we have been, um, sometimes questioned about our fairness by some of the different stakeholders in all this. Recently because, because of some of the skill-based people and also in the past by, um, the horsemen. So I think fairness is something that needs to be, we, we, we've been accused of not being as fair as we should. I don't believe that to be true, but I think fairness is needs to be mentioned somewhere in that.
Thank you. Well, I think we have several here, honesty and this. So maybe we could start just writing them down if you don't mind, Teagan, and then we can go through those. Now I say three to seven is, is best practice, but that doesn't mean you have to stay within three or seven, you know, three to seven. So I just want, want you to know that. But let's start writing down. We have responsible, efficient, accountability. Fairness, transparency. Okay, thank you. Honesty was in there as well. I also heard quality at one point for our discussion.
Was it why dot that had humility?
And one of them did. I think it was workforce services.
Workforce service.
Yeah.
I think we are missing that in our values.
Humility.
Well, in the sense that we should not be a hurdle or a hindrance to the operators and to the, into the general business environment. That's sort of my, at least that should be one of our values that we don't want to be a ball and chain around the industry itself. Anybody follow where I'm going? Is that?
I, I do Troy, and the thing about it is, is that again, like I said, we've been, we've been accused by some of the skill-based operators as well as some of the other stakeholders of being a hindrance. And not that I believe we have been, but we've been accused of that.
Well, I think anecdotally, on individual cases will probably be a hindrance as long as, as long as we're making fair regulations that protect the gamblers. But I think as a general value, we should look through that lens once in a while and say, are we making regulations for the sake of regulations or are we actually protecting somebody? That, I guess that's, if we're looking at values generally as on a broad picture, that's, I kind of like to look at it and be, try to humble myself and say, well, if I were an operator, would these be helpful or just a pain in the butt? That's kind of where I'm at.
I think professionalism is key also. We treat everybody in a professional manner. So I think that's a, a value to have. And I included service on my little portion there because we are of service to all stakeholders. That includes all the skill-based games, all the horsemen, the people of Wyoming, the, the governor, the legislators. So we're a service to them as opposed to, um, something else. So that's kind of why I included that in there. But, but I think professionalism is one that does need to be included also.
I would agree.
I agree.
I, I do like the servant point. I, I, it's, we're servants to a lot of people. We're not the boss.
Any other values that we should put up there that we've forgotten? Are there values there that might mean the same thing? There's 11. Like I said, best practice is three to seven. That, that, that doesn't mean we have to stick with them. If these are important to you, then these should be your values.
Don't be afraid to jump in commissioners.
Or you Charlie.
Thank you. I think, you know, one of the key words that seems to keep coming back and forth back to us is integrity. You know, if you read at the bottom of my emails, I've quoted an individual in our state, you know, if you have integrity, matters if you don't have integrity, nothing else matters. And, you know, I, I think it's a huge broad brush across all of these is the integrity of everything. But I, I personally, I, I love what we've gotten here. I think humility, you know, professionalism, service, transparency, everything is, is just very, very good. So thank you, everybody.
Do you think we should put integrity first? Does it matter? Does the list matter as far as what comes first?
I, I think with, with the gaming industry, and this is all the way all across the country and all across the world. Um, effective gaming regulation is built on integrity. So integrity is always the number one thing that, that gaming agencies and gaming commissions strive for. You know, and a lot of these words can fit underneath integrity, but when they're separately listed out like that, I think it, it hits differently too, to, and it shows the public that we're going to ensure that these things are also, we're focusing on these things also.
Thank you. I heard, I, Director Moore, I think you said integrity, humility and, and service. Would those be your top three?
I think you got thumbs up from a few people. I'm not sure.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
And would we like responsible or maybe responsibility?
I think responsibility fits with the others.
Any other changes of, of, you know, the list of order?
I like professionalism at last.
I agree with moving professionalism up also.
I do too.
Any other changes, any movements? And the great thing about this is you don't have to make the decision today because after we are done today, Teagan will send out, um, the draft mission, vision and values. And then like Director Moore said, you'll have an opportunity to word smith it again before you actually vote on it. So, um, just so you know, it doesn't have to be a decision made today.
Okay.
I think these are great values.
If, if I were somebody who were addressing a commission or somebody, something else like that. Um, these would be the values that I would hope that I would get from any commission or any other state agency.
Okay, I'm just going to say this one and I'll leave it, leave it alone. I think if we put too many buzzwords in this, I think it kind of takes away from our mission statement, guys. I mean, I like the integrity, humility, service and professionalism. Then you start getting into fairness, honesty and quality, which I think comes under integrity and professionalism. Or do we want to keep with the, uh, these buzzwords just to catch everybody's attention? I'm just throwing that out there. Then I'll shut up.
I would agree with you, but I like the word accountability.
I do too. I think that's a good one. And we don't have to change anything now. I just wanted to throw that out there for a thought. I mean, they're all good. Don't get me wrong. They're all good. I've just, I'll leave it at there.
I, I see where you're coming from Dick. Integrity and professionalism is going to cover the fairness, honesty and quality.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, but, uh, you know, a lot of people like to, like to see those actually spelled out and not lumped in with something else, but it just seemed like a lot of that is covered under the integrity and professionalism in my book, but for the public's awareness, it might be better to have them out that way. But to me, it looks like it's just, uh, more buzzwords out there to catch their eye, which is good.
I, I agree that they could all fit under integrity, um, but from, from what I'm hearing and even some of the things that are said about the commission with us favoring one over another, I think they would like to see even that word fairness in there, even though those could all fit underneath integrity.
Okay. I'm like Randy, I just hate being accused of being in somebody's hip pocket all the time from some of our audience.
I would think we could just leave them where they're at for right now.
Yeah, that's fine, Sheri, I think.
President Davis, you've been pretty quiet on this.
I'm just supposed to lead, remember?
Okay, so are, are we Director Moore? I think it's time to give it back to you, give, give the floor back to you and, um, we'll get this sent out to everyone. And, and we really appreciate everybody's time today. This was really fun. Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you ladies.
Well, thank, thank you very much for all your work on this and, and work in the future. And I think this is, this has been great to hear from everybody on the commission. Um, I, I think we've, I, this is, this is really pretty good stuff we've got here, I think. Original mission statement, uh, had lasted since the, uh, late sixties, early seventies. So it, so it is hard to pull apart from that mission statement, but we're still keeping. And then we're expanding. So thank you for everybody's participation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks Charlie.
Very good.
So I think we're, we're at the end of this. Um, is that right Ann? We're finished?
I believe so, for now anyway. Really appreciate everybody and I hope everyone has a great day.
Well, thank you very much. We don't, we don't need any adjournment or anything like that. And again, thank you for your time commissioners.
Thanks. Thank you for getting this set up guys. See ya.